Call meeting in order.
Brian.
Roll call.
Brian Card.
Here.
Diego Lawrence.
Here.
John Sarantopoulos. Matthew Wendorf.
Absent with notification.
Michael Huco.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
Here. Any alternate, uh, seating alternates? Michael, you're on for Matthew. Addendums?
Not this time.
Okay, and the paperwork on the desk?
Paperwork on the desk is for 25 Colonial Drive. Uh, we got the comments back from our town engineer. And the applicant's engineer called up our engineer. And we just got that email from our engineer saying all his issues and questions have been resolved. And then there's also a letter there from Connecticut Water, 'cause someone on the commission had requested a more conducive letter from Connecticut Water.
Okay.
What does that mean conducive? I know what conducive means, in this context, what does it mean?
Yeah, it means that they wanted some more information, so that information was provided in the second letter.
Okay. Citizens' comments on items that aren't on the agenda?
Item?
Not on the agenda. If you've got something that's not on the agenda. Gotcha. Okay. Both of these have to be read.
I'll just read one of them. It's actually citizens' comments and public hearing comments are basically the same. All both comments can be mailed to publiccomment@killinglyct.gov or mail to the town of Killingly at 172 Main Street, Killingly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public hearing comments received will be posted on the town's website at www.killingly.org. And then to participate, and you can join by phone, it's 415-655-0001. And you can use the access code of 2633-603-8249 when prompted.
Okay. We just had public comments. We were saying public comments, but for things not on the agenda. I imagine you want to talk about a specific one that's on the agenda. Right? Okay, special permit application 231314 CBD Killingly has asked for it to be continued to October, what?
I'll make a motion to that effect if you look forward.
October 16th is our next regularly scheduled meeting, and they do have it in their letter.
Okay, October 16th. You made a motion, have a second? John seconds it, any further discussion? Go ahead.
If anybody's here who wants to speak to that, we're gonna let them have a comment?
If there's anybody here that wants to speak to?
But the applicant's not here to respond.
Nobody's here to respond to you, so you can speak, but we're not really doing that.
My name is Albert Weiss. The Weiss family owns most of the historic area that's adjacent to this proposed change in zoning. Okay, it was shut down, I believe, by the, um, the people that were at the last meeting. Okay, we, we, we object to any sort of change in the zone for that particular property. Okay, and what they're gonna do there specifically. Okay, it's in the historic district. We've taken tremendous efforts over the last 50 to 100 years to preserve the buildings, many of which were in their original condition and are very important to the, the history, really, of the town of Killingly. And, um, we're gonna continue to own these properties and expand. Right now, we're in the process of painting them. They haven't been radically abused, the ones that have been. We've tried to, over the years, acquire them and improve them and bring them to contemporary use without a lot of disruption. Right now, already, since these guys have taken over the adjacent lot on 101, there's been cars breaking down out in front of it. The, the, some of the major trees on the property have been taken down. And, um, we object to any sort of change, same as the, the park department did, that will affect things in that area further. It's our plan to set up a trust and have the properties remain in family hands for the next 100 years. Okay, that's where we're coming from. And everything that we've done has been with private funds. No block grants have been given to us or even sought. Okay, we're, we're active in the historic commission when we can. There's turnover and staff. But my name is Albert Weiss. This is my wife Kathy Weiss, and, um, other members of the family are involved as well. Thank you.
Anybody else for this application? Staff, you want us to, anything you want us to touch now, or?
I just want to make the commission aware, and it's already on your staff report, that the town council during its meeting of September 12th, 2023, held a public hearing regarding the easement. And at the end of the public hearing, the town council denied the granting of the easement to the applicant. On Thursday, September 14th, 2023, staff talked to the applicant, at which time the applicant stated they were requesting a continuance to October 16th of 2023, the meeting to allow them time to prepare a proper, to prepare a site plan without the easement on the site plan. And then I just said a formal written request for the continuance, if not included in this packet, will be available to the commission members on Monday, September 18th, 2023, at the meeting. So, that's, that's all what they want to do, is they want to take the easement off, off of the site plan that they have, because that's no longer a part of what they're doing.
Questions by anybody? This is going to be continued, so. Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion by?
So, it's a motion to table?
Yes.
That's what you got?
You made the motion.
Yeah, well, I wanted to make sure I was doing the right.
Continuing it to October 16th is what she did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions?
Okay.
Special permit application 231317 Canterbury Holdings, 25 to O'Neill Drive, GIS map 113, lot 29-6, 6.5 acres. Application for planned residential development consisting of two fam, 16 two-family buildings. Uh, zoning section 410.2.2 low density, PRD, section 570 planned residential development, and section 700 special permit, and section 470 site plan. Mr. Bob Deluker, correct?
Correct.
CLA. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Are you putting something? Yeah. So, it was a right-hand block of the UCLA engineers, professional engineer. We're located in North. But the client's 96, so it's just me. Since last meeting, we took some of your comments and members staff. Staff had some good suggestions to rework the layout to create a loop, loop road. So, there are no dead ends. Turnaround issues. As soon as Jonathan pops it up on the screen. I'll go to the end. I do have another flash drive that you need. Oh, no, you're good. I had to log into my. I heard you talking about that Connecticut Water letter. It was a math error. One of the commission members noticed it on that letter, so that, that's why that was resubmitted. They were using 16 foot headroom, especially 108, 28 headroom. It was the same result, more or less, making service to the development. But that's, that's why that was.
Okay.
All right, so, as you can see, there's a big number of units. There's a root road that comes up, drift short of the end of the cul-de-sac, wraps around, services all the units, then comes, connects back into the end of the cul-de-sac. There's an internal walkway at the rear of the homes. It ties into a central common walkway around some common space with the pavilions. We add the playground. Also, the walkway continues around the existing drainage pond. We were able to eliminate the drainage pond in the south end of the site. This layout creates more, the need for more fill, so there's more earthwork. But we were able to bring up that south end of the site and, and, um, force drainage to the existing pond through the pipes as well.
I'm gonna cut fill. Do you have a number? Because I didn't see it on the plans.
I don't have a, I don't have a number up yet, no.
Do you have a ballpark?
It was more or less a balanced site prior to this. I want to say maybe 50,000 yards. Somewhere in that neighborhood of, of, of fill.
Import required?
Yeah.
All right, then, I think you have to go through our earthwork section for that amount of import.
Yeah. So, I was gonna hit on some of the comments from last. I made a list of comments from the last meeting. We were talking about snow removal, which I think this layout's a little more conducive to dealing with snow, without the dead ends. Uh, there were, there was a comment about having a, a walkway on one side of the road, and I think we took care of that by having the internal, internal walkway that, that accesses the site. There was a comment about adding some lighting. And we do show, it will be, yeah, there's lighting on the individual houses, but we do show about a half dozen other lights in, in areas that are, around the common areas.
Uh, while you're on the subject, can I interrupt and ask? So, you are aware that this is a dark sky town?
Correct.
Okay, so everything you're gonna do is going to?
Be dark sky compliant, yep. There was a question about an HLA agreement that will be provided. I spoke to staff, so that, that'll be something my client will be working out with his attorney and, and us heading to them for review. Fence around the pond, which we've provided. Engineering department has some more details. They want us to see black vinyl. Visitor parking, we ended up adding eight more visitor spaces. I think there were originally 11 required, and we have 19 now. Um, I went through the calculation for open space with the planning staff, and they are satisfied. There was a question about the, the lack of turnarounds, which I think we resolved. More active open space, we added a playground area. The specifics on that I don't have at this point, but that's something. He was talking about a swing set with maybe some other features. But, uh, that's something, you know, we can make a condition of approval or at least make sure staff gets a review of it before it's resolved. Um, there is a common mail area that we've designated this spot for. There was some comments on the land seed plan, which, um, we did have a pretty detailed land seed plan which changed certainly with this layout. So, I, I went over that with staff, and they seem satisfied with it. Uh, we added picnic table to the pavilions. Um, there was a question about the Connecticut Water letter, which we, I talked about earlier. Question about, uh, we were showing four-bedroom units. Since then, I've, I've met with staff, and our client, he is looking at two, three, and four-bedroom units. These are the largest footprints that would be out there, but he's looking at scattering a mixture of, of, in addition to the four-bedroom units and two- and three-bedroom units. And maybe slightly different footprints, as I said, though, these are the, these are the, these are more or less the largest footprint that would be out there. So, he's, he's looking to selectively put some different shaped units in there to make it a little more organically. Um, question about three-to-one slopes behind the house. Push that slope further back, so it's not as close to those, those back decks. There was a question about a central bus stop. At this point, my, my client is not, uh, he doesn't see the need for a central bus pickup spot, thinking that there's probably two locations that they'll come pick up at the bus, but, um, he's open to talk about that.
Well, would that be a board of ed?
No, that's part of PRD requirements.
It's part of PRD requirements, and part of that is because the buses will not go on private property. So, if the students that live on this new private drive cannot be, expect to be picked up at their doorstop, they would have to most likely go either to one of the two ends, if not just one.
I believe the board of ed this year started doing more of a centralized bus stop approach, so they've been having a lot of kids go to the end of streets. Um, and so you're seeing clusters of kids, quicker pickup times this year. And I think that's been working, so I think there, you're probably gonna see that model staying.
But you're also, that's for the public transportation system. So, for, that NICAR provides, it's to accommodate and encourage public transportation. Whether they use it or not, that's another story. So, I mean, basically, something, you know, like the school kids, it's some kind of overhead protection, but.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, he was just, um, he understands that they'll be picked up at a central location, it's just whether or not he's gonna be providing a couple of bus shelters.
Well, I think that's the point.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, like I said, he's, he's open to talking about it, but at, at this point, he doesn't, I think maybe his old-school way of pe, of feeling how kids would get picked up and bring an umbrella if they need to and get picked up by a bus. But, um, but if it is something you're requiring, then I'll pass it on.
One, one approach that was done, I believe, on the one on Valley Road, the Valley View, they're kind of, it's kind of clustered together, but it almost as one structure would be the mailboxes with the bus stop. It's kind of an oversized structure with the mailboxes.
Where is this?
Um, the, the one at Dog Hill, but also Briarwood. Briarwood has, um, more of an oversized shelter with the mailboxes, but there's plenty of room, you know, to be under that.
I mean, whatever works, but it's the idea of a shelter for the school kids.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that could work. I mean, there's a concrete pad proposed for that mail, that central mailbox area anyway, so. It would be a matter of picking a central location.
Excuse me, Mr. Just so I understand correctly, you're talking eight bedrooms per unit, is that correct?
The four-bedroom units, correct.
Four bedrooms, yeah, per unit.
Up two, up two four-bedrooms.
Up to four, yeah.
Up two.
It will be two or, two or three-bedroom units.
So, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of children, we're saying, in that development. And, uh, is that radius, uh, you know? Depending upon how many children you have, it's a size bus that they're gonna send in there.
Correct, the radius.
Is that radius adequate for a bus to turn around?
It's a firetruck, the, the, it's a cul-de-sac. The bus will not be going into the development, because it's a private road.
Yes.
So, um, it's a cul-de-sac, like your town cul-de-sac, so.
Is that adequate for a bus to turn around?
That's what they're, they're sized for. I mean, if all your dead-end streets have town cul-de-sacs that size, so.
Well, then, again, snow issue in the wintertime lessens those cul-de-sacs in many cases, so, you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're asking. I mean, it's your town standard cul-de-sac for turnaround for a bus and a firetruck.
And, and the fire department has approved that cul-de-sac as being adequate for their equipment?
Well, it's, it was built according to town standards. The, the idea was that road was gonna be taken over by the town, so it's, it meets your town standards, and, and that's, that's how it was sized for a turnaround for a firetruck and a, and a bus.
That cul-de-sac's already there.
Yeah.
Pardon?
That, that one cul-de-sac that's shown on the plan is already there.
It's already been approved by a planning and zoning commission.
Yeah, that was part of a 2004, I think, application.
So, it was built according to town, uh, standards?
Standard, at that time at least.
Yeah.
Yep. The fire marshal has looked at this proposed layout, and I don't think he provided any additional comment other than, um, fire hydrant locations.
But the road, even though it's a private road, and it won't be picked up using the road, the road has been designed to handle firetrucks and buses.
Yep.
So, if that's, if you see that turnaround in that top north right corner, that, that's why the shape of that is, is wide as it is, to, to allow buses to make that turn and to allow the firetrucks rather, which are, I think, more restrictive than buses.
Anything else, John?
No.
Go ahead, Bob.
So, um, those were your comments from last month. Since then, we went to a wetland meeting last Monday, and, um, I think we got the sign off from them. Uh, I've, since I received some comments from the town engine, engineer today, which I went over in detail with him this afternoon. And he guessed and sent a, any mail saying he was satisfied.
So, wetlands is approved, it's all set?
Yes. I think a copy of the advertising, label advertisement should be in your packet. Should have been. If not, I have it, but it has, it has been there.
So, I just wanna make.
I'd be happy to answer any of the comments.
I, I'm just wanna, under the PRD section, it's got sidewalks shall be provided and shall interconnect all dwelling units, off-street parking areas, planned presidential development facilities, and a town road where frontage is calculated. Additional frontage sidewalks constructed to town specifications may be required by the commission. Where appropriate, the commission may require such sidewalks within the development to serve pedestrian movement to nearby off-street community facilities, such as existing public facilities, et cetera, et cetera. So, the point is, is I don't see any sidewalks on your road fronting any of the buildings. And I, when we talked about that, the last meeting, that's the intent, that you'll be able to connect all the buildings with a sidewalk, so.
Yeah, I'll let Jonathan come back and weigh in on this, but we, we met with staff, and, um, we worked around, we worked up this layout with, with, with some of their help and direction, and we felt this, um, was adequately addressed that item.
First four words, sidewalks shall be provided.
Well, I think we're providing sidewalks, whether, whether they're fouling the edge of the road or internally trying to make it look a little more organic, as, which was staff's comment.
Shall interconnect all dwelling units, off-street parking areas. I mean, that's a shall, that's not a.
Yeah, I mean.
So, one of the ones that, since we looked at that recently, even up to today, some of the other past approvals with the one-sided, which is more of the direction under subdivision. Um, they say at least one side. Under PRD, it says ADA compliant. Stone dust can be made ADA compliant, it might require more maintenance thereafter, like after a stone, after, like, if there's a washout or anything like that. It's more of a maintenance schedule item. The interconnected item does come up in subdivision as well, and the way that it's been looked at before is one-sided.
I'm fine with one-sided. We said that at the last meeting. I'm just saying, it's, it's saying that we shall have sidewalks.
Yep.
All right, we, we have allowed projects like this to go continue with one-sided sidewalks. You know, in the past, we have done them with two. We have approved them with two, but this is saying, so we're saying, yes, you can do one side. And as I'm reading this, unless you can, somebody else from a, with more paperwork than I do can argue this, then to me, you need to put sidewalks in here, at least on one side. And then, lighting, lighting, outside lighting shall be provided on the site to eliminate building entries and sidewalk approaches. So, it would seem that you would need some, at least.
Well, we have, yeah.
You've got them at the buildings, but those are up to the people if they want to leave them on.
We can, we can show more additional light poles. We're trying to limit the amount of.
Well, I agree, we can minimize it, it's a residential area. But maybe where handicap ramps are or something, I don't, you guys decide.
I mean, we, we, we have several, uh, light poles out there.
So, there are ones identified, like, on the plan.
It's hard to read this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine. Uh, we, I think we have, we have a full size. Would you rather look at the?
Not really, just tell me.
I, I can tell you this, that what you're talking about is lighting the handicap accessible, the access. That was a comment done by our town engineer, and he has said that all of his questions and concerns have been addressed. So, um, that tells me that he's already talked to Bob about that, and Bob knows that those type of things do need to be lit up and to be taken care of, so.
I'm just, yeah, I'm quoting direct, so.
No, that's fine.
So, yes, lights are important, but we talked about if there's a front porch, then the light has to be underneath the roof of the, you know, that we already, over the years, have found a way to say, we're not gonna have lights on stanchions aimed up at the sky.
And I totally understand that, but what I was saying, he mentioned the handicapped ramps.
Yeah.
Going into the, you know, sidewalks and parking spots. And I know that that was something that was addressed with the town engineer.
Right, and I'm saying that the, that the lighting for those places need to be cognizant of the other issue.
Yep.
I think the applicant already said everything would be proposed as dark sky compliant.
Okay.
Well, it seems to me with the density of this project, it's an absolute must to have sidewalks, at least on one side. You know, with the amount of units.
We haven't been putting sidewalks on one side. Like I said, this is, I, I like this layout, and, and staff, we, we met, and we, we, you know, this is what we came up with together, but, I mean, we.
The, the, I think the layout, in my opinion, is. The, the, I think the layout, in my opinion, is a, a big improvement over the last layout. Like, the flow-through design, I think is beneficial for safety and all, but...
But we could eliminate, you know, the, the, the walks in the middle and, and just put them to one side, that's...
Well, the walks in the middle is a, that's part of the open space.
Yeah, I was talking about the walks that shoot off to one, uh, the circular walks in the middle would stay. I was talking about the, uh, the walks that branch out to behind the houses. Because that's what you're suggesting, instead of using that type of walk, there should be something on, on one side of the road.
Well, yeah, I'm just quoting from the regs, that's all I'm doing, so.
I mean, if you look up in the northern corner, we're...
That's your walking trail, around the, around the...
That, that would, yeah, and then, I guess the north, if you look in the northeast corner, we're more or less hugging that one side of the road, then we branch off to the left, but we can certainly circle around and stay on the interior side. It, it's really not that much of a difference from a, from a, from a construction standpoint.
As long as you meet the regs, that's all.
Yeah.
Is that, I can't tell, but is that detention area all fenced in?
It is.
It's a hundred percent fenced in?
It's, it's, it's on the inside of that trail, of that path that goes around it, so it, it may be a little blurry, the lines together, but...
They look like little dots on your maps.
Yeah.
So, a question on that to follow up then, because you, you mentioned you talked about open space with staff. If that's a fenced-in stormwater infiltration basin, how does that meet open space requirements?
So, one of the things under passive, inactive, is walking trails. So, it's the trail itself, uh, there's also, uh, in the, uh, language that talks about preservation of existing trees and, and whatnot. So, there, the current proposal does not call for the clearing of the trees in that fenced-in area fully. The basin, as it sits right now, is more of the right-hand side of that fenced-in area. So, it's, it's a very loose interpretation of that.
Yes, I was gonna get there, um, but the, the plan's also called for cleaning of the basin and maintenance of the basin, right, which could encompass cleaning everything inside the fenced-in area if the fenced-in area is being used in the calculations as stormwater control.
Yeah, the capacity of the basin is below that, that existing tree area, we're cleaning, um, we're cleaning everything to the level of, of the storm that's designed.
So, not having the luxury of the stormwater calc in front of me, or defined, I'm, right now, I'm interpreting that everything inside that circle is a stormwater basin that's to be maintained and cleaned.
It, it is not, though.
But that's what's shown on the plans.
Well, what's shown on the plan is that, that's a, there's a walking track going around.
I, I'm not arguing the walking trail, I'm talking about the, the passive open space that's being called out inside the fence line. Right, that's being included in the passive open space calculations.
Correct.
Correct, and that is an active stormwater management pond inside the fence line, as shown on the plans, correct?
The active part of it is not in the tree area, though.
What's shown on the plans is that's called infiltration basin number one, yes, it's being regraded on the right-hand side, but the whole basin's called infiltration basin number one, it's not defined as a sub-basin inside of there.
Well, we can, we can, we can change that note.
I, I'm just, this is the plans in front of me, so this is what I'm going by, right? So, to me, that is not open space, that is an active stormwater infiltration basin which changes your calculations. And I understand what staff is saying, that it's, again, trees and open water and stuff could be considered, I don't consider it active stormwater management, open space, I mean, that is active part of your development. So, that, to me, is a problem.
We will move the fence line to include, uh, uh, to include just the areas that are graded and where the capacity upon this.
I'm not asking, I'm just telling you what, what's shown right now, and right now, to me, if I do the calc, you don't meet the open space requirements, so.
It'd probably be best to show, um, the proposed open space and everything as like a gradient, like, as its own plan.
Okay.
Show how, what is exactly being proposed as open space, in a way...
And being preserved.
And preserved.
Yeah, and it is deceiving with the fence line circling the whole thing, so, you know, we, we can keep, we can keep that interfacing with the tree line to be, to be maintained.
And, um, floor, sorry. So, again, just got stormwater management part, and I did have a concern about, how did you get rid of the pond on the bottom, I think it's the southeast corner, if my direction's correct?
We, we raised up the site on that corner.
Yep.
And pitched it all to...
Okay, and, and town engineer did make a comment about stormwater management increasing beyond post-development conditions, and what's happening? So, hey, that's number one, we'll have to read the stormwater calc. So, what was the discussion regarding condition, or item number fifteen, on the, on his?
Um, we discussed the, the fact that, um, can you?
Yep.
Do you have a stormwater report?
Yeah.
It's...
Yeah, I can bring it up.
Yeah, if you can go, go to the, uh, there's, there's a couple, um, graphics in there colored maps.
Yeah, this has to install one running off to adjoining properties.
Correct.
Yep, that's number one. Number two is the, the grading you have on the eastern side and that southeastern side by raising the properties, you're still creating slopes that are running off the property uncontrolled.
Yeah, I, I will show you what's going on there. I think it's, it may be around, uh, page sixteen or seventeen, but it, it opens up into some big maps.
Small computer, they tend to go slow.
Yeah, so this is, this is existing, what's going on, that's proposed, so go to the first one.
Yep.
I know it's kinda touchy. So, the blue area is what's going to that pond now. And then, there's, there's two other areas that go off-site or head to the pond, they, they're, those are the three existing drainage basins. So, the blue area takes the road, the existing development, and is going to that pond now. This is, this is proposed development. The blue area gets bigger that, that goes to that pond. The purple area is what's leaving off to the east, and that orange area is what's leaving off to the, kind of the southeast area. So, what I discussed with the town engineer today was that everything, for, everything impervious is going to the pond, where any of the houses that are proposed along the edges, we're requiring the roof leaders to head to the road and to, the road drainage system will take it and bring it to the pond. So, as you can see, there's actually an outlet for the pond, but it, it's really an emergency outlet. There's a catch basin in the pond that, once the, the elevation of the pond gets to a certain level, it'll go into that pipe, go into that catch basin and, and outlet. But that, the, if you look through the calculations, the elevation of that, uh, catch basin is two feet higher than a hundred-year storm. So, that pond takes a hundred-year storm, and then it takes another two feet, that's why I was saying, why we don't really get into that tree line too much. The ground is just all gravel, I don't think there's, there's ever any water there, even with, with the existing system as it is now. Um, and we used to, we took permeability tests out there, um, and I believe it was conservatively eight feet a day or something like that, and we used half of it, we used fifty percent of it to be even more conservative. And, and between using the exfiltration rate of the soils and modeling this, the, the hundred-year storm, that area handles it without a problem. In, in addition, we, we put that emergency pipe, which is probably handling something, you know, much higher than a hundred-year storm. Anything going off the site is, and what we discussed was within hundreds of, it's really almost rounding issues with the program we're using, because what Dave was talking about, I think it went from two hundreds of a CFS, one hundreds of, of a CFF to two hundreds of a CF, which is really even hard to measure, CFS. There's nothing from the proposed impervious leaving the site, um, and as you can see, those, the purple and orange area is, is pretty insignificant from what was actually leaving, uh, it's more or less the same as, as what was leaving under existing conditions. Bottom line is the soils are just really good, the infiltration, um, so that's how that area can be handled. We raised up that southwest corner, the site, originally, we were, um, trying to balance the site, and that's what created that pond in the, in the southeast corner. We have since, in order to get this loop road to work, get the drainage system to work, um, we're showing more fill in that corner.
All right, but again, the specific comment was the post-development conditions for areas two and three have doubled from pre-development conditions, as far as...
Yeah, can you, can you go to, I think it's page fifteen.
Again, I know what the numbers are, again.
They, they're just, they're just tiny.
And, and I understand engineer says he's satisfied, but I'd like to see a specific response either from the applicant or the engineer addressing, you know, what's being done to minimize any adverse impacts to the neighbors, neighboring properties.
I'm sorry, it's page three, I think the map was on page fifteen. So, watershed, I don't know if you can blow that up? Watershed one is the pond, you can see they're all zeros because nothing's leaking the pond. Watershed two, if you look at, nothing's happening in the two-year storm. In the ten-year storm, it's slightly increasing from three hundreds of a CFS to point oh one four of a CFS. In a twenty-five-year storm, again, these are, these are tiny flows, because you're usually talking in single digits, and these are hundreds and three hundreds. And then, then you get to the hundred-year storm, and it actually goes down. Watershed two, again, once, um, the same, these, we're talking, uh, the, the two-year storm is no increase, the ten-year storm is more or less no increase. Twenty-five-year storms, a decrease. The fifty-year storms, um, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the bottom number, yeah, the two, the ten, the ten, uh, twenty-five, fifty, and I just, there's slight increase, there, there are hundreds of, of a CFS increase, and that's what I discussed with him today.
I'm not arguing the numbers, I just, I still want to understand what's gonna be done to minimize any potential impacts. I don't know if there's any impacts today.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're saying there are no impacts, and that, that...
Yeah, but you need to handle post, post-development stormwater runoff to equal, either equal pre-development or do some sort of mitigating measures. You can't just say it's de minimis and there's no issues, because if potentially there's issues down gradient, right, then we've approved that, so. My request is, I'd like to get a specific answer from you or the town engineer addressing that doubling of the flow of the property from post-development.
That's fine. Um, I, I, I believe his, his email satisfied that, but...
His email says my comments are addressed, but I just have a comment, a letter full of comments, I don't have specific responses, so. Staying with his letter, so, did you get a letter from the Water Pollution Control Authority as well?
We did, we, we, we got it earlier, I, I think he, he forgot that we got it.
That was in last month, the Water Pollution Control.
It's, it had the same, same error in calculation.
No, it just, um, the water company just had an error when they multiplied the bedrooms.
I agree, and that's been fixed, but so did the sewer company.
They, I mean, the, the water company had a math error when they multiplied the units times the bedroom.
So did the sewer company, so. Anyway, if you wanna pull it up, I, I might as well. So, in general terms, sorry, Ms. Chairman, uh, can you go through the plan for residential development and five seventy point two, the intent and five seventy point three, and, and tell us how this PRD meets those requirements? If you don't have the rules, you can get your copy. Do you guys have a copy of them?
So, while she's flipping pages, I have a question, um, not on this application, but in general. So, what used to be a hundred-year storm, because of global warming, it might now be called a fifty-year storm, and that the intensity of storms is going to continue getting worse, and so all of these, you know, hundred-year storming, all of that terminology is fluid. Yeah, I mean, we, yeah.
I'm gonna try to just bring it up before we move on tonight.
The disaster march is on, so we have to just...
Intent was the first one, right, Brian?
Yeah, five seventy point two, C.
I was just bringing it up so everybody can see it.
Establish opportunity for innovative combination of housing and encouraging creative clustering approach to the development of residential land in low mean density zone. As I said, we, we spent a lot of time with staff trying to come up, up with this layout and felt, the intent was to have a, a more organic layout and to, um, less barracks-like look, uh, and for that reason, we, we are also proposing different, um, house layouts. Open, open area, I'm sorry, wide range of types of living units available in Killingley, I think I just spoke about that. Desirable community environment that would not be possible through the strict application of minimum requirements of the zoning and subdivision regs, so I think that's why we're here, so I don't think there's anything to address there. Open areas and/or recreational opportunities, I think I went over those on the plan. Efficient use of land with shorter networks of utilities, streets, and greater economics in development costs. Well, again, I think that's the purpose for using this PRD zone. Residential developments which are compatible with surrounding land use intensity, existing town road system, sanitary sewer system, and public water system. That's what makes this development possible, that it has sanitary sewer and public water system.
Do you believe this development's compatible with surrounding intensities, though?
I believe it's compatible as any, any of these developments are near typical residential zone.
Okay.
What was the next section?
The next section, so that, we have to, if we're gonna approve this, we have to basically understand how it meets at least three of the following six criteria, so five seventy point three, section C.
The lot is maintained as a single common property with common open, open areas which preserve or enhance the appearance, character, and natural feature of the area. The lot will be maintained as a single common property, and I believe we show open areas which preserve and enhance the appearance and character. Planned residential development meets the requirements of this section, and three or more of the following findings will be accomplished with granting a special permit. One, the undeveloped land within the planned residential development is preserved and serves park and recreation needs. Development conserves natural resources as applicable. I believe we meet that, number one. Number two, the planned residential development design incorporates measures to shorten road and utility networks. I think, um, the loop road is necessary based on, um, designing this and, and going back and forth with staff. So, I think the, the amount of utility runs, uh, more or less must follow that road. Number three, planned residential development preserves and protects particular areas and terrain having qualities of natural features or historic significant, significance, there's, um, nothing of stark significance here that I'm aware of. Natural features are being maintained specifically in, uh, in the irrigation pond area. Number four, the planned residential development protects streams, rivers, wetlands, ponds, as to avoid flooding, erosion. None of that applies here. Number five, the planned residential development offers architectural styling and detail which complements the surrounding land uses and provides quality housing opportunities to meet growing needs of the community. As I stated, there'll be, um, three different types of houses, two, three, and four-bedroom houses in here, um, and there'll, there'll be different footprints and styles. And there'll, there'll be different footprints and styles. The, uh, number six, the planned resident develop, develop, development incorporates features and designs to enhance public safety and minimize potential hazards. The road has been designed to, uh, town standards, and, and I believe we don't have any public safety issues with our design and the layout.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chairman, just two more questions. Um, just, uh, I missed utilities. So I see your water and sewer layout, and, um, your sewer runs pretty much down the pathway.
Correct.
So the regs actually try to request that the sewers run central to the road or in the roadways? Um, can you explain the reasonings?
Yeah, there's, there's just no way to service those houses by gravity running it along the road. We'd end up with a pump station.
Yep.
So.
And our easements can be granted for all those sewers? I mean, they had to be accessed and?
Well, it's.
Or is it all gonna be privately owned?
It's private, yeah.
All the sewers can be privately owned and it's not being, okay?
It'll be, unless the road, unless this is taken over by the town for some reason.
No, it's not intended to, but.
Then, then it would be, uh.
But water and sewer easement's supposed to be granted for repair.
Yes, they'll be granted as needed. Yeah, I know the, the water, I can't remember if the town takes over the sewer. Does the town take over the sewer, or do they leave it as private? They'll, they'll be granted if needed, if the town takes over the, the, I don't know if they're in control of it to the house, or if they just, uh.
I believe it ends at the stub, so because they look at it as one property, but then, I believe they connect, they charge you connection fees for every unit. I think that's how.
But do they, do they own the main and the private development?
I don't think so, because it's a condo development, that, I think there's provision, they don't.
You become a community within.
Okay, that's right.
We didn't get that clarity from Dave, though.
Some towns handle it differently, some towns.
We can, yeah, we can get that clarity.
Own it right, right up to the, uh, uh, the stub in the street.
Yep. So, so all sewer and water will be privately owned and maintained?
Correct.
Okay, and what about, um, electric? I didn't see electric on the plans. Laid out. Underground electric or overhead?
It would be underground. Um, there, there is something that I was going to, worth talking about as far as drainage, though, that, the pond, uh, and that's something that'll be up for discussion. Since that pond will be taking town water and private water, there'll have to be some maintenance agreement, either the town or the developer. You know, there'll have to be some cost sharing, or, or there'll have to be agreement that one of them is just taking over the, the maintenance of that pond.
All right, and we don't have any, you haven't provided any documents to date, right?
Correct.
No easements, no homeowners agreement, no?
No.
Road maintenance agree, road maintenance.
I was told that could be worked out, um, after approval.
There's a couple of open-ended items that I think we need to get resolved, as far as, again, water sewer, we don't want to make sure if that's going to be in private, and that's in some other homeowners agreement, that there's a s- a fund or whatever set up to maintain that, so it doesn't default and go to the town, right? So same thing with the roadways. Um, so we'd like to, I'd like to understand and know if there's an HOA or whatever in place that's gonna manage.
There will be. There, there has to be some, I, I just don't know if the town, like I said, some towns handle the sewers in these HOAs. And I don't know if that's a case in Killingley.
I don't think it's in Killingley.
No, I, I think the, the most recent one on Dock Hill, it's all private. But they're in charge of all the facilities on that one. That one included pumps, so, um, it's a little different.
Yeah.
That's it for now.
That's it?
For now.
Um, yeah, uh, the, the realization that you're talking three and four-bedroom units, and like John said, with the kids, uh, I'd be more inclined to see more intensified recreation areas, you know, recreation or facilities for some of the kids in, in the project there. Um, it actually calls for it in here.
Yeah, we're proposing that, uh, thirty by forty playground, and, and there is a big green space in the middle there. Is there anything in particular you had in mind that you've done on other projects?
No, I, I, you know, it's just trying to provide activities and areas for, for the youth. Try to keep them at home. But, I mean, it does call for it under common areas, common open areas. Children's informal play areas, parks, picnics areas, playgrounds, golf putting green, swim pools, tennis courts, scenic open areas, walking, biking trails, or types of common open areas of recreational activities considered ex- acceptable.
Yeah, I think we got a good network of, of trails in there that, that will likely change, um, a little if we, if we hug the road with them, but if anything, it'll be more.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Shouldn't that be a part of the homeowners agreement, too, that, you know, this playground issue, uh, provisions made for students, for buses, you know, rather than have the place get built, occupied, and then all of a sudden, uh, you know, the tenants are getting the town involved in order to get some sort of a solution for their children.
Well, I think what's gonna happen, uh, is after this meeting, it's either gonna be a condition of approval that, I think I, I discussed that it, it makes, if we do a bus shelter, it would make sense to do it with that mailbox area.
Yes.
So, uh, that's what I would propose.
Well, isn't that all spelled out in a homeowners agreement?
Well, you know, typically, we have in the past always, uh, reviewed homeowners agreements before approvals, but we haven't been, but we haven't had any, much of this. Haven't had many developments like this in quite a few years, so things are kinda different a little bit now.
I think the last one, being that the Valley View was reviewed at staff level, it was a condition of approval at the end, was that the, the final, um, HOA condo docs and everything had to be presented to staff for review. Part of that being the need for, like, attorneys to go through and write them all up, and they tend to be quite large documents.
Right. Well, oh, yeah, I'm aware.
But, yeah, but I think on some of those, some of the answers were definitive at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm not hearing definitive answers to some of these questions that would typically be addressed in the HOA regarding those, so.
I don't, I'm trying to see what's for buffering here, I, this whole, along that property line there, outside of the edge of the, uh, sediment basin?
There's, there's a, well, there's a tree line there, um, quite a bit of buffering, actually, on that side in particular.
The plans don't really show it that well, so I'm, I just wanna make sure it's covered, it's been taken care of, but in the air. Proposing this in a already built neighborhood. Actually, shut some lights, give it.
Mr. Chairman, do you see that, that squiggly line kinda cutting through the middle of the, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I see the tree line there, right. But then there's also another one that's shaded underneath, so it's like, you know, is this showing that the tree line stops there?
Well, it, it, that's, that tree line's being cut back in order to install that, that path that goes around.
Fine, my point is to make sure that we got heavy buffering.
Okay.
Along the property line.
Yeah, that, that buffer's gonna stay the same, other than what needs to be opened up for that path.
So was there a gate for maintenance somewhere?
That was one of the engineer comments. We've talked about putting a pull-off at the end of the cul-de-sac and a gate right there. To, to have a, um.
Oh, at the end, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that.
Basically near that sc- uh, uh, lit from the grass culvert?
Yeah.
I don't remember, I, did you give us, uh, architecturals for the buildings themselves?
We did, but it just, the four beds in the unit, we gave them last, last one.
You're good. Was this all vinyl siding?
Uh, I don't believe so, because some of the buildings are closer together and they can't be vinyl siding. Due to fire codes.
Oh, really?
What, does the vinyl melt?
That's why.
Yeah.
Gee, we just built a house with vinyl siding, I'm really thrilled to hear that.
It's not so much that they melt in the sun, but if there's a fire in one building and they're so, if they're too close, then they can melt. I have seen it happen in other buildings and whatnot before.
I'll have to ask my husband what's he doing with the shed, because other than that, there's no buildings.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to see something, if we're, if this, I don't know if this gets done tonight or not, but I'd like to see more intense recreational activities for the, for the kids there. You know, something to, um, keep them occupied, if we could try to.
Other than a playground?
No, well, any kind of a playground, but just, not just the sandbox and, you know, I mean, some kind of a, something that, you know, to help keep them.
Some more detail on it.
Okay.
More basketball hoop, you know, I don't know. Tetherball, I don't know. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but, because it's not my job, but, but I am saying that I'd wanna see something, activities in an area for.
Yeah, we designated a thirty by forty area, um, he, he didn't wanna commit to exactly what it, I know it's probably a swing set, definitely, and, and some type of climbing.
Something to.
Something to climb, but.
There's gonna be a lot of kids in there, you're talking how many buildings? I'm sorry?
Sixteen buildings.
So sixteen buildings, four bedrooms, I mean, I don't know how many you're saying are four bedrooms. So, I mean, it's, it's a potential for an awful lot of kids. So you, you kinda wanna need to keep activities in there to keep them busy.
One of those numbers, can you read those?
I can't read enough.
I don't have my glasses, so.
I got my glasses, I can read.
No, the passive and active.
Twenty thousand square feet, twenty thousand five hundred passive, nineteen thousand two fifty.
All right, so of this area, it'd be nice to see the breakdown, what you're saying.
Yeah.
What's passive, what's active?
Yeah, some active, correct.
Yeah, what, what I was pointing out was in that central area, you're, you're calling twenty thousand square feet of, uh, passive and nineteen thousand square feet of active, but it doesn't differentiate, it just shows that square area. Just this area right here.
Yeah.
You're calling that out as like forty thousand square feet of open area, but it's broken down almost half a half, but what's what, right?
Yeah, and we.
What the chairman's getting at.
Yeah, from an active standpoint, it is a field, so you could, you can play sports on it, but if, um, adding a basketball court in addition to the playground, I, I don't think that's an issue.
You just, that many kids, it, it would be whoofus to have.
Yeah.
Some kind of recreational activities in there. Structured activities. Any other questions, commissioners, staff?
I just have one question, is the commission looking to continue this?
It's a good question.
Before we get that, um, fire hydrants, so.
Oh, yeah.
So there was a letter last meeting from the fire marshal with some issues, right, specifically the cul-de-sacs?
No, the issues were turnarounds.
The turnarounds, right, cul-de-sac, not cul-de-sac, the ends are turnarounds.
The hydrants were, were not an issue, and I think we have the same amount of hydrants. I think it.
There's three hyd- I didn't see them.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as they're there.
They're there.
You got good glasses.
Okay.
It's the one thing I look for.
All right, good for you. All right, so it's a fire, so that was my question, because fire hydrants are required.
Yeah.
And they're there. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So is there to the south, isn't, isn't there a house over there to the south? Or, well, that'd be the southwest, yeah, there's this, this, there's a field there, then there's a house of them. I can't remember for sure.
There's two houses there, is there?
I was gonna say, yeah, then there's, but then directly south is in their house. I'm just, the only reason I bring it up is.
This is the old layout, but I do have an aerial, hold on. Once it loads here. If it loads.
Where are we with time for the, uh?
So there is one house here, and then.
Yeah, and right directly south?
Oh, directly, no, there's, um, wetlands.
Isn't there a house in the back?
There's a little pond or something directly south, I know, but there must be eventually a house, but I don't.
Yeah.
No, I thought I remember a house up, well, maybe closer to the road. My only point about all that is, is making sure we provide enough buffer around that border to where the residences are, that's all. You know, the, the should, the regulations call out for, you know, making sure we protect the buffers from the neighbors and stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we.
Those are three areas where I think I would be concerned.
If you could get a, uh,
How many had an aerial?
The landscape man, Jonathan, I don't know if that's.
Keith?
Ma'am.
This is, it started in August, this was the first continuance. But if you continue it tonight, he really should write a letter.
Request, okay, ask it. It seems like there's enough things here to, we should have.
Mr. DeLuca, are you willing to continue the meeting to the next meeting? Would you be willing to give us something in writing to that effect? Thank you.
Also, I, this is a little thing, literally, something fell off your table.
It's a.
It's a little round thing.
The mic, the mic cover.
Okay.
Yeah. This is longer than we cleared. Yeah, sheet ten, eleven, Mr. Chairman shows, uh.
That's what I'm getting at.
Buffering.
I'm sorry?
There's, there's sheets up there.
Okay, yeah, so you've got trees on that one side? And this, you're saying, is enough natural buffer in there?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're holding the edge of the natural buffer, it'll be grass up to the edge, but that, that, that side is, there's, there's a pond there, and there's wetlands, and there's, there's no one immediate to that edge.
And on, on, um, sheet eleven. Yeah, sheet eleven, twelve. The detention ba- pond, where the walkway is, it's cleared from the walkway to the property line?
Yeah, the five or ten foot that's needed to clear for the walkway is the only buffer where, natural buffer that would take out.
Right, so, I don't know, should there be buffering between the walkway and the property line? I don't know.
We, yeah, I mean, we can plant something there if that's, if that's, uh.
I see a lot of nodding heads behind you, just to let you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, I mean, we can, we can, we can plant some, some trees along that edge, it, it, it would just be buffering a walking trail, though.
Well, also keep in mind, I, I think you stated that's an access to go around and clean the ponds, too, right?
Uh, the access is gonna be more right there. I mean, the idea is not to disturb that, that natural buffer that's there.
Well, that goes back to my first comment of that being a pond and to be maintained, so, but the question goes, how, how do you maintain that pond if you don't have access to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, right, commissioners or staff right now at this point? Public, wanna speak? Yes, name, name and address, please, for the record.
Steve Warren?
No, at the mic, please. Is the light on on the mic?
The mic's on, there's no light up there.
Oh, okay.
Steve Warren, ten thirty-four Upper Maple Street. I live roughly ninety feet. The back of the property is, is ninety-one feet from the start of this development, that pond. I walked that property this week and last week. That property is uphill from all of us heading toward the road. My biggest concern is, I hear a hundred-year storm, I've lived in floodplains, I've lived in water my whole life, I've done a whole bunch of stuff. Those ponds are calculated to do X amount. If it only rains X amount, and they're cleaned and they're maintained. But our properties are downhill from that pond, and right now with the rain that we've had already, our land is already soft. Things are moved all over the place. That hill hasn't been cleaned yet, that hill hasn't been cleared yet. And I've heard facts and numbers all night long, but no one's ever walked a property as of yet. Big concern about the water. Second concern, is our property becoming that development's playground? I don't know if you've done the numbers on how many children will actually be there, on a hearsay of, you know, two to four bedrooms. So why don't we just go with the four bedrooms? And let's put a, let's put a couple of kids in each dwelling, and there's, what, sixty-four dwellings? That's a hell of a lot of children. I don't want my property to become their playground. I'm not blaming the children, but that's not going. I don't want my property to become their playground. I'm not blaming the children, but that's not going to work for children. There are somebody concerned about this that, that you have other than what's on paper. That track that you're talking about, there's not that much land and trees that's there already anyway, going around the pond. I mean, I'd probably love to track myself, if I could use it, but that's not going to be the case. The road that's gonna service that may meet all of your specifications for being a road. The traffic in that area, as it stands right now, doesn't need what, sixty-four more cars coming out of that road? Anybody do a traffic study? Anybody figure where these children are gonna walk down the road? They're not gonna stay on that property. They're gonna be everywhere. I have a real concern about the safety issue of this, especially the children. Facts and numbers are fine, but children are very important. You've got to be aware of where you're putting your children. This is not a place for that many children. I'm not against development whatsoever, I'm not. I do believe there should be housing back there, but not that much housing, and that many people, and that many children. What happens to my property if that pond for some odd reason, quote unquote, is not maintained the way it should be? I'm the one that pays the price for someone else's development, along with all of our neighbors. We are existing properties. We are existing properties, and we should be thought of as existing properties. Yes, put housing up there, but not that much housing. I mean, we didn't work this hard to have it all destroyed by either mother nature or too many people, or. This doesn't make sense at all to me, why you'd want to cluster everything into that. I live in a town in Borrowble, and they have cluster housing. I've seen what that does, and you can call this anything you want, but this is cluster housing. You're putting an overabundance of people and property and buildings and clearing and so-called open space. Why is this justifiable? How is this justifiable? There have been other proposals for this that haven't passed that haven't been this big. Why don't we put something out here that makes sense? Sensibility. I don't care about the facts, maybe the hundred year storm. Have you seen the weather this week? That's all. None of this makes any sense to me. It doesn't show any concern about the existing citizens of this town. Or it doesn't show any consideration or care about the amount of children that will be there. It's just not going to work. Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else want to speak to this?
Hi, I'm Carol Donnelly, ten thirty-four Upper Maple Street. So I came to the meeting back last month, and I've never come to a meeting like this before. And my background, I do a lot of research, and so of course I did a deep dive and started looking at all of this information. And so I have questions, and I don't know, probably should go to the owner, but maybe Mr. DeLuca can answer them, maybe some of y'all can answer them. But I have questions regarding, and just so that you know, when I moved here, killing me five years ago, I moved and bought that house because there wasn't a lot of people around. And I knew the property was for sale over there, but I figured that they would put in five or six houses like that would go with the rest of the street that was there, and there wouldn't be this cluster development. So I want to know, and I, maybe it's in the permit and I just haven't had a chance to get to the town hall, but is this considered, or is this permit or development being subsidized in any way? Can anybody answer that? Is it being subsidized in any way?
That's really a question for the developer.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really not a question and answer session?
I, well, I just had, okay, so my thing is the drainage easement. Everything rolls downhill, that's my concern. My other concern are, is my property. There are no sidewalks, it's my understanding that the kids who are intermediate school age, they would be in walking distance of the school. That's my understanding, I don't know if it's true. There are no sidewalks on Upper Maple. I go out to get my mail, I say a prayer, just for the cars passing by. That's the honest to God truth. So who's gonna pay for those sidewalks to be put in for these kids to walk to school? Am I gonna have, I don't want to have to put up a big fence to block that off to keep kids from cutting through my yard, because that's what's going to happen. They're not gonna walk down Colonial Drive and then up Maple, they're gonna take the fastest route there is going. Also, I'd like to know, how many feet did you say on that side, the, I guess the left side of that drainage pond? How many, like, what's the depth of the trees or the buffer? What is that? How thick is that tree line, I guess, I don't.
The depth, you can use that word. The depth of the trees you're talking, like, how thick?
How thick between that, that walking path and the neighbor's yard? Yeah, the property line.
If you don't mind.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Tightest is twenty feet to the edge of the walking path.
Mike, Bob?
At the closest is twenty feet to the edge of the walking path.
So property line to walking path, twenty feet.
And with that pond, that would be stagnant water, would that be treated, like, what's gonna happen with the mosquitoes and the bugs?
You know, the ground infiltrates, it's all gravel. Do you live in that house on the left of the pond?
I, well, yeah, I'm ninety feet away, so I'm technically on Upper Maple.
Seen water in that pond? I'm told there isn't, that it doesn't hold water, but.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, if I have to do this through the mic, I'm sorry. Apologize.
So my last. That's because there's no asphalt there, there are no houses there, so the water can get absorbed into the soil. Now you're putting all of that asphalt in those houses and building materials, the houses, that the, water's gotta go somewhere, so wouldn't it fill into that pond and not drain as easily?
It'll be more water going to the pond, but it will still drain.
So there wouldn't be a bug issue?
There won't be stagnant water there, that's my question.
That is my question. And I guess the other questions are technically for the developer, so. So then that's it for me.
Thank you. Sir, sir, did you want to go up? I'm sorry.
Oh, can I just ask one more thing? So I have a private well, I'm not on sewer in town like the, the house is closest to that. So I, is this somehow going to affect my well, or could it affect my well that?
Well, we're, we'll be on public water, so we're not drilling and not looking for other water sources.
So you're not going to have like a private well, community well? Okay.
Anybody else want? Hey, so commissioners, anything else you want to bring up, or? Uh, staff? So we have a good list of what?
Sorry, just one more comment, I'm checking my notes on the open space as you're looking at, so passive open space or commonable space, passive should be accessible and not intrude upon the privacy of any additional homeowners, so when you're looking at some of the open space you have on the eastern boundary, can you make sure you address that too?
Bless you.
The eastern or western?
East. You got open space, I believe, on that property line to the east, that tree line you're calling passive open space?
The west, over here.
East. No, down the bottom right corner.
Bottom right corner.
He's got a passive, does he have passive open space right there?
He has, it has a little marking saying common.
Yeah, it says common open space, existing wooded buffer.
Right, it's kind of, it's kind of as open space, and so open space is supposed to be accessible. So just as you're looking at the open space question I posed earlier, just make sure you're looking at the regs for the open space and addressing the requirements, please.
So, so is that detention space gonna be considered open space or not? And if it is not, is there gonna be enough room to make all the required space, open space?
That's for us to decide and him to fix.
Well, I'm asking, I just want to bring it up, so, because.
My opinion, my opinion as a commission member is that as an active stormwater pond is not open space. Common or, common or active.
We will clarify the interface between the active pond and, and the tree area that being counted as open, passive open space.
So, so if, if Brian's right, and it's not considered open space, is there more, is there enough other lands to compensate for that amount of open space? Without losing a building?
I can't answer that, but I mean, as, as we submitted this, like I said, we went over with staff. That was one of the things they reviewed, and they concurred with our calculations for, for passive and active open space, so. I did not think of that as an issue, but if we have to go back and look at it harder, we can.
You know, we've had that issue before with open space about what's practical open space and what's just being called open space, and.
Disposable land that nobody wants.
Exactly, not usable as open space, but being counted as open space, and to me, I'm just concerned with that, that that could be a potential of what that pond is being used for, for something that really isn't.
And I agree, I mean, it goes, it's no different than buffers, buffers are meant to be buffers, but if I was counting them as open space, almost seems like we're double dipping on it, but that's.
Well, there's no, yeah, it's.
It's gonna be there anyway, because it's a required buffer, but if we count it as passive open space, is that the intent of what we're trying to do here?
Okay, so other than that, do you have a list, we got a list made up for Mr.?
I have some, and I know Mr. Card has a few, and he's usually very good at emailing me the next morning.
I think you guys got most of it, most of it said. So as long as we've got all that, we can continue, yes, we'll call, just continue this.
Do you need something from me in writing?
Yes, please.
Just, just a request to continue this?
Till October sixteenth.
Okay.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting, but you have to take a vote on it as well.
Make a motion to continue, somebody?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. You go. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you people for showing up for it. Unfinished business, special permit, twenty-three thirteen fourteen CBD, continued. Special port twenty-three thirteen seventeen, continued. Subdivision application twenty-three thirteen nineteen. I'm understanding was continued?
She's requesting a continuance.
So we're gonna have a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue.
Second? Michael makes the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, okay, it's continued. New business, text change application twenty-three thirteen twenty, Jamin Patel, request his own text change that would allow a redemption center as allowed permitted use in the Borrowble-Danielson Central Business District. Receive and schedule for public hearing for October sixteenth. Is it complete?
Yeah, it's a word text change, so yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I just need to know what this thing is. What's a redemption center?
Cans of bottles. Yeah, so, so the state has redemption centers that are like a licensed thing, so think of like, if you go to Big Y, right, and you have those little can machines, that's not a redemption center, this is a indoor facility that has a machine that's capable of recycling aluminum cans, glass bottles, things like that.
Okay, so just out of, I mean, I produce a lot of those things, and my husband takes it to the dump. Oh no, actually, he gives it to the Boy Scouts, but what's happening? It's, somebody's going around and getting the bottles from the supermarkets, or what's?
So the way the state describes it, it's open, facilities that are licensed under that program, it's open to potentially a, like a collector, like somebody that would be collecting commercially, for instance, collecting and recycling and delivering it there, or individual residents that typically have a larger quantity of materials. Looking quickly in terms of like, where are these types of facilities in state, most of them go right down the eighty-four corridor, so there was one way back when in Jewett City, but most of the time, you're not seeing those types of facilities on this side of the state at all.
Because we're bad at recycling?
I, I guess, or regulations don't permit it, so I think the proposal entails for requiring a state license and indoor activity only, nothing outdoors at all. Particularly if they're looking for a permitted use versus say a specially permitted use. So permitted use in central, or in the central business district typically requires a site plan approval for a brand new activity like that.
So we'll know more about it?
You would know more about it.
Okay.
Yep.
What happened to Keith?
What's that key? Motion to adjourn?
That's okay. You were missed, anyways.
I wanted to make sure he, if he need to write it out, make him feel comfortable. Okay, what, where are we?
Schedule for hearing.
We got a motion?
Motion, nope.
Okay, so we, so we got a motion to schedule, receive, and schedule?
I make a motion to receive and schedule, but.
October sixteenth?
For October sixteenth.
Second? Second, Michael. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, okay. I gotta step out on this one, it's my nephew. Where is it? No, where am I? Am I ahead of myself?
Yours is the last one.
Oh, Christine, map changed, twenty-three thirteen twenty-one, Christine McCannon, Johnny DeLuca, Jack Helfgoff, Weld Incorporated, five forty-three Waringo Road, they want to change, we changed that to industrial, they want to change it back to commercial, general commercial.
Because welding didn't work out? No.
Anyway, there's reasons. Anybody have a motion? Yes. Yeah. The floor.
We don't need to watch, yeah, motion to receive and schedule public hearing.
I already said that. I'm waiting for a second, first.
You can't, yeah, so I did, I made a motion.
You made that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, because you're not allowed to, don't you remember? You just created it.
We got a second.
Okay, John seconds it, Brian makes the motion, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions, none. Okay, now, I have to step out of this one. So go ahead, it's just.
Dude, there's so many words there.
There's so many words.
Do you want me to read it?
What are we, what are we looking at now?
We have a request for a special permit application twenty-three one three two two from JP F Rentals LLC. JP F Rentals LLC and Christopher Shanet of the Land Owners. It involves two addresses, eighteen Ware Road and twenty-one Pineville Road, medium density, it's approximately four acres. They want to construct fourteen new single-family rental units with community building, parking, drainage, and pertinent utility services. And it's under the Town and Country zoning regulations, medium density, section four ten, point three, point two J, special permitted uses. J, multi-family development, section five five five, multi-family development, article seven, special permits, and section four seventy, site plan review. four seventy, site plan review. We are to receive it and schedule it for a public hearing for Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
You can see it out here. Yeah, so...
Fourteen units on four acres?
Yeah. Multi, it's under the multifamily.
All right. Do you have a motion to receive and schedule public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do have a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, done. He's out in the hallway. Gonna keep going.
Keep going?
Yep. Workshop meeting minutes, August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. We should keep moving on.
Motion.
Motion. Workshop meeting minutes, motion.
Did that one, are you moving on?
No, motion by John. Do have a second. Second? All right, we have a second. To accept a meeting minutes, special workshop, yep.
For the workshop minutes.
Motion by John, second by Mike. You can do it. Big finale.
Finish it, you're going for it.
Come on, big finale.
All in favor?
Say aye.
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 Okay, that was the workshop. Regular meeting minutes, August twenty-first. Motion?
I'll make a mo...
I have one, one correction, only because I was reviewing it for tonight.
After the motion?
Of course, I review them all.
Motion?
After the motion?
Second.
If there was a correction.
Comment.
Okay.
Second?
Motion to do a correction. I'm gonna double motion.
Go ahead, just do what you want, all right? Get it over with.
We got a motion, a second. All right.
I can get this at home with the wife.
Page eleven. Um, what number is that? One, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Ninth bullet. Says the drainage basis was designed for a four-hundred-year storm. Seems awfully big.
All right.
That would be like the planet Earth is over.
It just, four-hundred-year storm caught my attention, that's awfully big. One of them meant four-eight-hundred-year storm versus a four-hundred-year storm. That's, that's my educated guess.
We need to find out.
Well, the drainage logs are right there, and now tell us it's a four-hundred-year storm.
I guarantee there's nothing in there for a four-hundred-year or a five-hundred-year storm.
Right. Because it would be presumptuous to create such a regulation.
Yeah, it's four-eight-hundred-year storm. That's all. That just caught my eye.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
With the corrections? Second, oppose or abstentions? None. All right. Correspondents, everybody's read that. Department reports, zoning officer, and zoning repeals report, anything?
The twenty-five Colonial Drive was approved by wetlands. The wetlands are all off-site, so, but they required additional information about the existing drainage basin and the soil and everything like that, and had it checked by a soil scientist. That's why they, it took two months for them to get their approval.
And the wetlands and water course?
That was for that one. That's, that's, that's all I have.
Economic development? Town council liaison?
From the special town council meeting, there was a presentation by Titan Energy for a solar revenue share program. It would have been thirty acres of solar panels put on private property. The town wouldn't have gotten any taxes from the property, so, from the solar field, so the town council did not go with that deal. From last week's town council meeting, Michael Zinefski, one of our constabularies, was awarded Medal of Life Saving from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Procedures. He did CPR on a patient who was successfully resuscitated, and mo, most of the town council meeting was spent with public comment for the easement for Owen Bell, and so the, as reported, we denied it. There were comments, they don't want such a development, it'll ruin the park, it doesn't comply with the plan of conservation.
And development.
And development, and a lot of safety concerns, and also, there's a lot of empty storefronts, and why don't we just, another bunch of... That was pretty much it. The public...
Chairman, I have a question. Would you know whether or not every child has to be picked up in the Town of Killenley? There's no walk-ins, right? The schools?
So, for KISS, the kids, I know there's a lot, there's walkers, and I don't know what distance there is for walking.
Oh, I thought they all had to be bused in.
No. I mean, some can walk. Okay, so my kid's thirty-one now, so I'm just talking out of my hat.
Things have changed since.
Okay.
Killenley, even, I know for, like, the memorial school, if all the kids were bused, but literally, some of them would walk across the street and they were bused.
Well, that makes sense.
I literally saw a mother walk, waiting across the street while the child got off the bus, and the school was across the street.
But I think that's their policy, where everyone gets bused.
But for KISS, they have walkers.
Lazy people.
Yeah, and that was because of one of the comments, the same thing, you know, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I, I think that, that the closed development, I believe, isn't walking because it's not really that far. I know the high school, they're not supposed to walk because there's no sidewalks.
Well, Fieldstone, is it Fields, what's, what's on M one, off one oh one? That borders the back of, now it's the brewery there, down the hill, that subdivision?
Yeah. Brookside.
Brookside. Brookside was built, and they were supposed to, the bus people, we, that was one of those with the narrow road, and the bus didn't want to drive down there because they felt it was unsafe. So, there was supposed to be a house at the end of the road so that the bus didn't have to go down, so the kids would walk up to that structure, and then they would be picked up there. But it was never built, and the bus goes down the hill and picks up all the kids now. So, to me, that would mean that the potential is there, that kids could walk at least the length of that street. Now, that's not a town road, or is it?
They have group pickups now. They started to pick up this year.
Is that a town road? It is a town road?
You know, outside of interpretation, but I think there is a policy that all students have to be bused to schools, if I remember correctly. And I think that happened when Dr. Silva was here, unless they've changed it since then.
Even if a parent wants to drive their kids to school?
No.
No, no, parents can drive.
Yeah.
But all others that don't have that sort of transportation have to be bused.
Just go, just go down Soap Street at three fifteen and see how many cars are down Soap Street, down Pleasant Street, waiting to pick up their kids. I did that today. I never go there.
How long before KCS is, is it functioning?
That's it.
Well, one more thing. Do we, and Brian, you might have more input, but the amount of rains we're getting, and I don't remember, I remember trying to look up the definition of a hundred-year storm. It was convoluted. It wasn't as straightforward as I thought it was for the definition, as I saw it. But I'm just wondering, we've had, I can tell you, because I've been working a drainage problem, we had, a month ago, nine inches of rain, and then the other night, this is a project, right across from the gas power plant over there, or gas station, or Gas Algonquin. And they have an official meter they have to use there, and they said they got ten and a half inches of rain last Wednesday. So, I mean, you're talking within a month, you know, nineteen inches of rain.
Yes, global warming is happening.
I'm not worried about global warming, I'm wondering about the definition of a hundred years. I don't care, I want to know a definition about, you know, should we be designing for something different? Because I can tell you, this guy's yard, it definitely needs something different.
Well, we're not, we're not going to establish what a hundred-year storm is, and that's not really established.
Right, I'm not trying to reestablish, I'm trying to look at...
Yeah, they're, it's based off, there are charts that are out there that are going to tell you what the hundred-year storm intensity is.
Right.
Doesn't that fall in the category of the federal government, that the states have to adopt it?
I would think so.
I'm trying to remember who, I don't think it's a federal, is it NOAA that does it?
Yes, NOAA, because that's where I read it.
NOAA does it and establishes it. So again, they're looking at data and they're reestablishing them, but by the time they reestablish them, we'll be beyond what the storms are today anyway. They'll, they'll establish it for today's storms, and we'll be ten years down the road, so...
Well, it's government agency.
And the only thing you can do is change the rules and say, instead of designing, locally, instead of designing for a hundred, twenty-five-year storm, we want to design for a hundred-year storm.
Well, I know...
Right? And a hundred, then go to the two, two-fifty storm.
Well, I know when, when we were looking at, I think it was the subdivision regs,